Guys, I have a number of items to bring up. Some, or many of them, are just for information. One of them that is not just for information is information on the garbage service that I had been looking at for a number of weeks now. Have proposals from two different businesses. One of the businesses asked that their name not be out yet, so I have called them Proposal One and Proposal Two.
What do they call that in the federal government?
Redacted, I believe. Mr. Pickett may want to correct me on that.
We all agree with your back vote.
No.
Before we bring it up for, if anything comes for a vote, we will certainly give names and complete information at that time. Jasper provides garbage service to approximately 592. Honestly, there has been an increase in that recently. We keep getting more and more customers with residential or businesses. Of course, one of the largest customers is the city of Jasper itself. We're talking about garbage from city parks, downtown area, and of course, our different office spaces. So, we are also a customer. And there's no inner-city, inner-department revenue where the sanitation department gets any funds for that, all right? They do, and we'll explain that in a minute, but it's got it another way. I've had an opportunity to discuss garbage collection with some city residences recently. Everyone I've talked to wants to see continued backdoor service. And in fact, in one of our work sessions, we discussed it, and I think the general idea from council is they want to continue backdoor service. Since 2012, city has invested $111,000, labor and materials to repair a trash truck that does not include a 2015 transmission repair that was capitalized and is not included in the amount. The repairs were made, but even with that, the vehicle's not reliable. And in May of this year, employees obtained a quote for $137,635 to purchase a vehicle that meets the need. Cannot have a large trash truck traveling the streets of Jasper and ride the service that we do. While discussing the purchase of new equipment, it became evident that revenues and fees of collecting garbage does not cover the cost. City taxpayers are investing an additional $237,000 into this department now again. We're servicing ourselves, so part of that is servicing ourselves. For you, you have two proposals. Those are from vendors that are within the area. My personal opinion is, in order to satisfy or do this kind of service, you have to be in the general area. You can't be traveling up from Atlanta. We did, I did discuss this with Waste Management. They had no interest in trying to do this. Proposal One is only a vendor, potential vendor, that is willing to do backdoor service. Proposal Number Two wants to stick to a street side or go to the street side service. You've got a number of different reports, probably just one page on the next page. There's a profile of our customers, and how much each customer is charged. I've estimated the revenue at $102,000. That's riding pretty true with what we are seeing now. And the monthly expenses of $28,313 ride very true with what we are spending. That is how we get to the loss of, or the additional investment by the taxpayers of $237,000, the difference between those two numbers. Proposals. Proposal Number One is three-day service a week. Residential, Monday and Wednesday. Businesses, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. So you have three-day maximum pickup. There are many of our customers who have a five-day pickup now. They would be underserved with this proposal. Backdoor service, $20 for residential. Same for people, there is no break for people under 65 right now. Citizens over 65 are getting a $3 a month reduction. Picking up the housing authority would be $18. And then one-day commercial service, $20. Two days, $35. Three days, $50. This proposal would be the city collecting the money and paying the bill that is set to us by the vendor. And they would not charge for picking up city parks and Main Street. Proposal Two, three-day service, Monday. They're not sure of the days. Would be a Monday through Friday period of three days. $13 for residential. Again, no break. And a commercial service would be $28 straight. They would cover the business areas. If there's a can out here, they will pick it up. Again, city collects fees and pays the vendor. They're asking for a five-year contract. And again, no charge for service in the city parks and Main Street. All these prices include the cart. Again, I want to say that in my discussion with citizens, it's very important to them to have backdoor service. And if you're looking to me for a recommendation, it would be that we continue the service as a city function, work to grow it, and make a purchase of the new vehicle.
Proposal One, the $20 a month for residential, not as for backdoor. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that in the contract?
No. No mention of the contract. Now, and that's another thing. Once you get out of the garbage service, I don't think you can expect to go back into it anytime.
I don't know why you would with this and that kind of thing. I mean, I know it's got its pros and cons like everything does, but...
Have you extrapolated these rates in Proposal One? To if we maintain the service ourselves with these rates, what that would look like as far as the proper loss? You understand my question?
No, I'm lost.
So if we're going, if a provider's going to charge this to our customers, and this is their proposal, what would it look like if we charged?
If we did the same thing. I have not done that, but it would be a separate contract when I show them. And I can provide that to you.
Because if we're going to change our rates substantially, maybe it gives us some guidelines on if we decide to maintain it and change our rates.
Well, and if you go back to the first page, I talked about a possibility of increasing fees to better cover costs. Or there are marketing people out here who say if you drop the cost, you're going to pick up some customers and make up the difference. I'm not sure to that.
Do you know how either one of these proposals compared to the people who are already providing the service in the city? Is this their current rates or...
No, that's one reason they didn't want names out there. Typical service in the county is $55 a quarter now, residential.
County and city?
Yes.
$55 a quarter.
And the benefit of the, my question, the benefit of the city signing them up and paying the contractor instead of just letting people get their own? What, does that save them?
That saves them the cost of billing and...
Keeps margins down.
Yeah. We call savings to them, but that's passed in this, this part.
Who has every-day pickup?
Five-day pickup, there is. Four businesses. Jose Suarez, which is one of the Mexican restaurants. Anthony Panto, I think, has had another, it's another restaurant, I'm not sure which one. Suarez, Southern Family, Skillet, Wingology, and Carriage House. So five.
Now, there are businesses, if I'm mistaken correctly, Jim, there are businesses on Main Street that do not use the city that have trash pickup.
Yes.
There are other businesses. I know you've spoken to some citizens, I don't know if any of you have, but I have gone out and talked to numerous people, giving them the numbers of what we bring in a month versus what we're paying a month for spending. I have yet to have one person tell me to continue service at a loss like that. When we are losing, when you look at it, $237,000 for just last year, when you spend the time to let someone know the numbers, it's pretty difficult for them to swallow that. And the question is, why has it not come up for? And so I think it's wise that we take our time and look at this. I would not pass up an opportunity to have a town hall meeting and present these facts to our citizens.
I think that's very important. If you look at the last sentence on the first page, it says, "Hope mayor and council provide information to the community and seek their input." I think that's imperative.
I agree. But that's something we can ponder upon.
All right. Is this something you want on the agenda for the next meeting?
If we're talking about doing a town hall, would we not want to do that to get some public input before we put it on the agenda?
Might have to put it on the agenda to put the town hall.
Okay. Well, that's my question, I'm not sure.
And again, Sonny's request of the numbers, if you could point those down, that'd be good.
I can do that. I'll have that for Wednesday. You really want our customers with...
The new rates.
The new rates?
Yes.
That's not a difficult thing. All right. Next item, it's blight ordinance. This is something that Bill had prepared earlier and wanted to have some time to discuss with council before we move on to a second region.
I've been going over this ever since I started drafting this, and I still have some constitutional problems with the one that, the one that we obtained to model by. Our municipal court does not have the authority to have interim actions. I don't know where that comes from, but we're under our municipal court, we don't have the power to do that. The section that's been identified as, section two, which is blighted property ordinance, there's several things that's got to be changed in there that I'm going to have to do. I used the masculine tense, and I didn't say "or her" in most different places. So I'm going to have to change that. I'm going to have to do a little more work on the amount of money that you can increase taxes based upon the property being declared a blighted piece of property. I think this one's too high. I think that's something that's already been ruled wrong by the Supreme Court, and I've got to look at that case and make sure we're in within that landing. First part of the one about derelict property, we have the same problem as far as using he's and she's and it's and that kind of thing. It's in a little bit of shape than the rest of it is, but still the problem that I've gotten is I don't believe, and I could be very well wrong, I've been wrong before, but believe our municipal court would have the authority to issue a citation for a condemnation in remum of a state property. What that would fall under would be a public nuisance, where you could go in and sue the property owner, get a court order from Superior Court to clean it up, then clean it up, tear it down, and charge it back to the property owner. And I've done that before, not in this town, for another city that I represent.
We did that.
We did it one time, I think, didn't we?
Yeah.
Well, we threatened to do it.
Okay. But anyway, I did. Threatened to do it recently.
Certainly have done.
And they, it works a little bit easier that way, based upon you, you take a lien against
the property, and then when they don't pay you, you foreclose on the lien and tear it down, get the nuisance gone, build a property on your back, and what they do is they walk off and beat the property, and you take it. But I've got a little more work to do on that.
Okay, I went over this with the model, with the tomorrow. You, on what they own is just like the duties, owning a real property. I didn't understand, I didn't verify on this part, considering what your issues.
You're saying I didn't put this in here? Well, it certainly needs to be.
Jim, help me get up to speed. The one that you sent by email, is that the original, or is that one that Bill has already worked on?
I believe that's one Bill worked on. If we're talking the same email.
I evidently didn't have this page. That's all I could know, but I wouldn't know because everybody else was getting there.
Well, the bottom half of it was in there, that's what makes sense.
This one's what I'm going by, those two paragraphs.
Yeah, the two paragraphs, yeah.
Don't know, I can't answer that question.
Jim, the one that Bill did recently, where sent the certified letter on the place to try to get it cleaned up, cleared up, is that the procedure that you're starting on, all of them?
Yes. And I say that we, I never spent, another time, I made a visit, and...
I'm just going to get involved.
Yeah.
Had success.
Yeah.
Proposals are...
Which is the whole point of just trying to get them cleaned up or the grass kind of, like, keep us talking.
Keep it as simple as possible.
I would think most people would comply.
So maybe you just don't know.
I mean, I probably have savings, but I think most people would.
If they can just rub their ass on it.
Yeah.
And I'll make you another copy of that if needed.
Where Southern Deputy is.
Now, this is not the one I would pay.
Southern Deputy.
Southern Deputy. Oh.
You come out.
The guy that owns it, lives in Brooklyn.
Sharman.
This is the one.
Sharman's.
Well, the, the, if you read the thing, obviously, you should have...
The one on Main Street, between Dr. Bill's office and...
Wait, what?
It's not Jake.
Jim, what was that?
I'm going to leave my job to that.
I'll make you...
Works as your first...
No, but I was that Mickey Flinker that, where...
Why, tell me that's 6:45, I don't know.
That's an issue that you would have with your tenant landlord.
Simple question. You're probably the only, this is out of my ignorance. In Rockdale, states in your building, it's been...
What do you say, what do you say, Rockdale?
Possessing the...
Just for example, you know that.
That's one, so it's got to come out of there.
What would you do, make that bill fall in between?
Okay, that was my question. So that needs to be protected.
It needs to be changed out.
Good work. All right, I think bottom line is, Bill's still got some work to do on this. But your all's input here is very important to what Bill's trying to write.
But we can't afford that.
Well, that's why I asked. I didn't...
Because I don't think so, it's only certified.
No.
What's the question?
We had a certified building inspector one time, I can't think of what he was...
It states here, Mayor, on the top page, buildings...
He would certify.
Oh, that guy, Alan Wood?
Yeah, he was semi-certified. Like he ever get, he wouldn't pull it through.
I don't know. I don't remember.
What was the question?
What I was asking about. The top part is not certified. It requires a certified building inspector. We discussed that would be redacted.
For change.
Completely. That's the word for that.
Change to be our building inspector, but it was a building inspector. I reckon that's part of Sonny's job, was to redact it or...
Well, it said, um, we're going to... If written on the duty, some of the city managers, as he...
Or designate, as long as they hold the minimum knowledge and certification of what that is.
Now, one other question, and I'll begin. It states in here that five residents of the city. If we have a business owner that doesn't live in the city and wants to make that request, can that verbiage also include them? We have businesses now that are currently beside properties that probably bother them a little bit, and I would hate to leave them out of something like that if it's affecting their business.
I apologize, I'm trying to catch up what you're talking about.
Yeah, in there it says five.
Five, five's just the number, only one that came from...
That has to be the complaint?
Yeah, you have to do that unless city brought.
And so it says residents of the city, that's fine. We do have business owners that butt up to residential areas. I would like for the verbiage to...
Well, I think it raises a bit more business.
Bill, is there a reason or a need to have five in there? I mean, just in your opinion?
Well, the only reason, the only reason it needs to be some kind of number, I would think, is because otherwise you just have complaints all the time.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I'm asking. I know you wouldn't want to just have one.
I mean...
Yeah, and I'm not arguing the number.
No, I'm not. Five, I mean, if it's bad, you're going to be a five. You'll get 20 people.
Bill, any problem with adding business owners or certain residents?
Okay. I think on the other part of that, we agree that it says, it talks about business owners, renters, and such.
Did I give you what you need, Bill?
Thanks, sir.
Any other comments? This isn't on your list, but it's one I plan on discussing. There's also been a lot of talk about a potential ordinance for metal buildings. The one that, that we had distributed to be looked at for consideration is, in my mind, too restrictive. There are areas inside the city that you would want to limit metal buildings, no doubt. There are other areas you want to be less restrictive. And somehow, we have to determine what those areas are and what kind of restrictions we're looking for. Looking at that current ordinance isn't getting me any closer to knowing what that is.
Well, if you, Bill, look at it, I mean, it says, refer to the old town. It does that in there, and where came from the city's wanting?
Yeah.
You know, they get their big fancy new town, but they want to keep the old town the same, and that's what they've done. I mean, we need to do the same thing, too. The thing is, though, do we just worry about downtown? Do we worry about east or west Church Street, and north lane, south lane?
And the only way I know to determine that is a council committee to come up with what districts they would like to see, and starting verbiage among the five of you, six of you, to determine what you want on it. So my suggestion is possibly a, some time at one of our meetings where a committee can be appointed.
Oh, it's a long one, too.
So the comprehensive plan kind of divides it up a little bit, it doesn't do something real specific. At least it would give us a starting point where we could...
If you took that and put it on a map, that'd be probably a good start. So with your permission, I'll add the possibility of the, I'll add to the agenda for September 5th meeting, a possibility of council recommending a committee be appointed for...
You didn't send anything out on metal buildings, correct? That's just, was passed out in our last work session?
Yeah, it was just some ideas. He had gotten that and just, I think, passed around for ideas of trying to come up with something. That was my understanding.
Okay. Blight ordinance, no reason to bring it up at the meeting September 5th? I don't think we're ready. But I will have the metal building. Next item, don't have any information on your book, in your book on it, but in case you haven't heard, there's a Jeep Fest for Jasper this weekend. Jasper PD, Jasper Fire Department, streets, parks are all involved. We'll be moving one of the garbage trucks over to Marwood Hill to help Sheriff's Department. Stage is being moved tomorrow to Main Street. We'll move the other garbage truck after it runs tomorrow to Main Street. Putting extra cans out, Main Street and Lee Newton Park, be doing pickups there through the weekend. Last number I heard was 1,300 Jeeps.
Yes.
Is that still firm?
Talked to Stanswell last night, 1,300 had pre-registered. Historically, every year, whatever pre-registers is 50%. They expect 26,000 to 3,000.
Jeeps. There's a number of people at Lee Newton Park camping already. I went down there at noon and... Pretty well...
Jeeps.
It's wonderful.
Yeah. Any questions on that?
They're going to night ride tonight, aren't they?
Yes, start at 7:30. This one is in your book, been asked by... Been asked by, it's the council member to look at costs of doing a dog park, dog run, actually two of them. Buy the tennis courts at. City Park. You've got a quote for the fencing of seven thousand two hundred seventy-seven dollars, thirty-seven pence. Also, just some ideas on pet waste stations that we would have to put up there. Have had a discussion with Joe Walker about liability on this. And he's saying that there's no real additional liability, but just suggesting that signs be put up with specific information. I have all of that. Depending on the amount of money we spend on equipment to put in, into it, then. Eighty-five hundred dollars on the, on the Jeep. If we go more than a thousand dollars worth of equipment in, it would be more.
What are, what's the pricing of the dog disposal containers?
Uh, anywhere from seventy-two dollars to two hundred and sixty-six. In fact, someone noticed I was on the internet looking at this and have already sent me an email that they were going to send me some samples of their bags. So I'll have some polyethylene bags coming.
Do you have a dog?
Yes, I do. Well, it's a pup. It's a half dog. Not a real one. All right. Any questions on this? Is this something you'd like to have on the agenda for September fifth? Ready, ready to talk about it? All right.
Do you have a quote from Weaver Fencing?
Yes. Okay, that's where I got it from.
Okay. I know you can't believe it, but.
Yeah.
That's the only quote we have is that.
Yeah.
What are the sizes on, does it tell me that?
The size of the walks. Sixty by eighty.
One was fifty-eighty, one was sixty-nine.
Two hundred twenty-eight square feet of fence, not linear feet fencing for the small dogs, two hundred and seventy for the large dogs.
Are these more like parks and they're more like runs for them?
It's, it's, it's a park.
It's where somebody that doesn't have, will have a backyard and let the dog out. It's got a gate and you sit there once a while, let their run around.
It's actually got two gates, a main gate, and it also has a eight-foot gate so we can get equipment in there and maintain it.
On the activity stuff, how much of the stuff do we build? Our guys?
Depends whether you want it out of wood or some other material.
Still working wood. But we don't normally use any recycled stuff that we have. I mean, we've got one of our kind of.
Wood. Yeah, we.
I mean, we.
We could possibly find a, a old abused fire hydrant. But when you get into the recycled materials, it's not something that we can really work.
Well, the one trouble is it's called urinates on the wood. It ain't gonna take long for the dog.
Yeah.
So is it?
All right.
Is there any profit in this?
Don't see any profit in this. No, sir.
I'm just trying to keep up with the profit.
All right, next one is in your book.
Does it not, there's a lot of complaints to dogs.
So we're gonna save the money from garbage to build a dog park?
If it cost us two hundred forty thousand dollars, I would have built a dog park though. I'm just saying. I don't know, I'm a home one anyway, but I'm just saying that kind of money. Where would we get the money, just out of curiosity?
I think we've got.
I think you budgeted for next year. You could use a lot of stuff this year. You're gonna, you're gonna go over budget.
We're not close to budget.
You're not?
Lisa.
Well, what you're looking at, we're about a month behind in expenses. Payables haven't been booked. You know, we don't do that till year end, so I'm worried about it. I always do. I, I try to keep everything under.
Lisa, could you bring us a report where you think we need to be concerned about for the rest of the year, just so we're not?
Well, you just never know what's gonna happen, just a thing. Something's gonna blow up, you know? You just don't know.
We did have an eleven thousand.
But that report I bring you monthly, it shows. But it's, it's not as up to date as it should be because of the, we don't book payables until the end of the year. We don't, you know.
Okay, next item is pet ordinance that's been requested by both our animal control officer and the chief of police. And this is to give the officer some protections if it was ever, if they ever desired to break into a vehicle to potentially save a pet. I'll give you a moment to read it. This one's.
Bill, have you read over this?
I was given the copy of what Jim gave me. And I think he put it into some kind of.
I put it right there.
Where did this originate from, Jim?
Lonnie and Greg brought it to me.
And I was talking to Greg about it. And what I picked up from him was that there was more of a need not to crucify someone who, such as a gentleman who the other day was caught, had the police call to him because he went in tractor supply and left his, his pet in the car. And he got a call before he got back. And the old gentleman understood, cried and said he cared more about the dog than anybody else. And if we had prosecuted him through the state courts, it would have been terrible for him.
Yeah.
So what we're trying to do here, I believe what you indicated is that we want something that we can bring to city court. And we can use a little common sense instead of throwing this gentleman under the bus.
Earlier, I think I used the word keep it simple. This is certainly an example of keeping it simple by allowing it to stay in the city court rather than.
I didn't hear it exactly like that. I might have missed that.
The interesting thing about that is tractor supply is dog friendly. If no one knew that. My dog loves that store. Reading over this, just out of curiosity, it does give our officers locally some leeway and a pathway to follow. What about a reasonable person and approach for a everyday citizen? You know, I, I have twice in Walmart parking lot called nine-one-one. And opened the door and gotten two dogs out, two severations. Two of our officers showed up.
I was wondering if I could call them.
There you go. You're looking at it. You know, we've got to protect the animals. They, they can't.
Have you, have you got any death children happen to this country this year?
Absolutely.
How many?
Unexcusable.
How many?
A number I do not know.
Thirty-one. It was on the news yesterday. Could be thirty-two today.
Unexcusable. But what I have in front of me is my animals.
Well. You're being their animals as well. Anyway, I just, I, the reason is that we can handle this internally instead of.
Yes.
That gentleman, that someone, some people drive around looking for dogs in cars.
Yep.
I wouldn't have a dog, I wouldn't have a dog in a car. But a lot of people do.
Well, and I think that's something that, that Greg can address. I think they've got common sense with the police department too.
And this, this protects their common sense.
Yes. Yeah.
I think, I think that's the key.
Yeah.
The dog would have to be suffering greatly, not just somebody ride by and see a dog in a car.
Yeah. Potentially suffering.
Well, suffering a little bit. It needs to be suffering some in order to be violating. Somebody will run a tractor supply and run back after his dog, it should be okay. If he goes and stays four hours, that might be above and beyond.
Yeah.
But we're getting calls from people who just see the dog.
Nothing like you see in the metro area. It's nothing like you see in the metro area, but it's. It is happening, and this gives our folks some protection.
Yeah, and of course I have with the temperature, how would we, you know, measure the temperature? Are we gonna go off based upon a vehicles gauge? Are we gonna provide equipment for the officers? What would be the local gauge in that, that temperature outside?
Keep it simple instead.
And.
Get the dog, get the dog out of it, not.
I, I think that's another thing we trust the police to, to understand. But it needed a number in there, and this is.
That's a fairly reasonable number.
It is, it's standard for this, this type of ordinance. All right, I'll put that on the agenda.
Jim, I, I missed it. Garbage, did you, did that go on the agenda or not? You, you asked, and I, my, I think my mind was wandering.
I think they're wanting a report about the customer, our customer base with the rates that the new vendors could charge or are wanting to charge. So that's putting it on to the agenda and if there's any action to be taken. I would love to see council say something to the effect, let's have a hearing on it.
On the agenda or not?
Yes.
Keep it simple.
Keep some of that. Thank you, boy.
Next one is in your books. Off of Old Philadelphia Road, Ralph Hicks Circle. In my mind, this was, this street was brought into the city a number of years ago. But if it was and then recorded, it, they can't find it, or if it was brought into the city and not recorded. Either way, it's not on the public record. So the owner of this property, David Chouse, has requested that city take ownership of this property. The streets are curbed and gutted. I think this is a, something that we need to, to discuss at a meeting and, and take a vote on.
What was the name of the road again?
It's Ralph Hicks Circle.
That property is contiguous with the Mount City Business Park.
Yeah.
Okay, it's been in the city originally.
The, the.
The road was never identified and accepted.
Yeah, exactly. We, I think we voted on, I can remember voting on it. Doesn't make any difference. It's not recorded.
No, but the actual road.
The actual.
Of the properties that are on.
I don't recall ever.
Yeah, and, and.
It wouldn't take a lot, it, it is a good road.
It, it, it's.
And it takes taxes on the property.
And they're wanting to draw the partial a little bit different. There is a potential seller, a potential buyer for the property.
What do you mean, Joe, it'll differ? We talked about that.
Please change the size of the lots.
That, that anything deal with the road?
No. I will put that on the agenda for consideration then, hearing that.
That would be just accepting the road.
Just accepting the road as, as city and then.
Is he paying taxes on it to the county? Or is the county, or the county considered a county or a?
I'd say it's, no, it's.
He's paying taxes.
He's paying taxes on it. It's on his vouchers.
He actually bought that property to the bank. He didn't, he didn't develop it.
No.
He just realized he was paying taxes on the public record.
Next item. There's nothing on your, in your package on this, but been asked a number of times by different council members about making the, a. Not allowing a left turn off of Mark Whitfield behind Dunn's pharmacy in front of Lowe's Building. Not allowing a left turn off of that road onto fifty-three. That's, I have done all the research I can do on it. There's nothing, there's, there's no limitations from the state. If that's something you want done, it can be done by a city vote, a council vote, and putting a sign up.
Anybody who tried to turn a left there, it's not from Jeff.
That's right.
Hard turn off at Mary Street sometimes.
My, my wife had a wreck there once. Lynn had her, and she caught me and she's crying. And she told me where she's at. And I said, it was your fault. And she said, no, it wasn't this car, it went too fast. I said, Lynn, you should have known better. Trying to make a left turn out of that, but.
I did.
That's a true story.
I wouldn't dare turn a left.
That was one of the nables, by the way.
All right, I'll put that on the agenda. Uh, next item. At a earlier meeting, we talked about a small partial owned by the McClure family. And council voted to allow me to look at bringing it into city ownership and using it as a park. Bill has looked at the cost of taking ownership of that property. And because of the way the estate is, that's where Bill estate, cost of accepting this donation would be about twenty-five hundred dollars. And is that something, this was, golly, how many acres? I believe it's. Yeah, very small.
Twenty-one, four.
Yeah. Is, does the cost of twenty-five hundred dollars change your own mind on?
And these are drainage areas as well, isn't it?
Yes.
It's not a good park area.
Didn't they want something? Peace Park or?
Peace Park, yeah. Freedom Park, Peace Park.
We got four hundred parks started.
And I had even talked to some civil, some community organizations about developing it.
Do they know that it's in such a state? Can't they just quit claiming?
Bill has talked to them. Bill's talked to them.
Mr. I.D. McClure's estate was probated. Mr. Mama was not and to, and she doesn't have a will and has to have an administration on her estate. And then you paid all those expenses. You wind up spending about twenty-five hundred dollars.
Is that all that was in there basically? Is that all that was in her estate? I don't see it.
Is this something you want to vote on, or can you just direct me to not pursue the?
I say just direct you not to pursue it.
Got it. All right, next. You've got. We have two pieces of property on Appalachian Trail. Y'all are aware, we took an existing road. And with the idea of improving it and putting the quote, big project through that area, have done some development. During that time, there were two pieces of property that were affected. The Grant property. You have a letter in your package from them. Shirley Graham. Suggesting that there were twenty trees removed and suggesting a fair price of ten thousand dollars to replace those trees. I, along with Russell Howard, looked at Google Images Current and before the project started. And it's more like maybe three or four, no more than eight trees that were affected. And we did not approach on, on her property and then. And we did not encroach on, on her property in any way, other than cutting down trees. We have gone back, made improvements to any access to her property off of Appalachian. I personally think that there's some negotiating that needs to be done on this and would like your permission to negotiate something a little bit better. And John, you may want to add more to this.
I was moving forward with improving that road quite a bit more than it's been improving.
Yes, yeah.
And so we never did what we had planned.
Because the big project isn't going to go that direction.
Well, we, we just decided to go a different direction. So we, we did take the trees out, but the barnage is still in the same place. There's no, no boundaries have changed. Now, Lawson property, there might need to be a survey, I believe.
There is a survey. It's in your package.
And there might be some encroachment on that side, but we, the improvement of that property by bringing both properties to the same elevation was a good trade-off. But I did say to Mr. Lawson, being Al, that we would negotiate that after we determined what we took, we'd be happy to compensate. And same thing, I told Ms. Graham. But we didn't do the sidewalks, we didn't do the drainage. None of that was done, so we did not encroach much. But that's something that you can negotiate out, I'm pretty sure.
Which property is which, Jim?
The Grant is on the bank. Lawson is the property at the corner of Spring Street and Appalachian Bank.
It's not out there.
There's a horse around there.
Yeah.
They don't look the same old corner.
Yeah, well, it's going down here.
Oddly enough, the, most of the road along Al's property is on the original road that is within his, it's on our right-of-way, on the right-of-way, but it's, it's in his lot. If you look at the drawing, Russell pointed that out to me. Again, we used to... Where, where we put new pavement over the, onto Al's property is the entrance to Spring Street. I don't know why we could go in there with the asphalt saw, remove the asphalt, cut it, remove it with a piece of equipment, put dirt down there, and restore the property.
So this is survey that...
This is Al's property, right? They're not touching it. They're looking at, Jim, it's not even touching Al's property.
Over there in the corner, it is where the gravel drive is, but...
No.
Can you tell me which property is which, Jim? Where are you saying?
Right here, right?
This is Al's, this, this is, this is the...
Horse running.
This is Al's, I'm not touching it, Al.
Horse running, over here.
Here's the critical part of the lane. I think... This, this broken line?
Right in the middle of the road.
Right in the middle of the road? That's the, that's the property line.
Oh, okay.
Well, they arranged off this one earlier.
But if you notice, the, the road didn't change there. Where, where, where we had the recent encroachment is where we tried to build an access lane on the spring. My suggestion is we go in there with asphalt, saw, cut it, put dirt, reseed it, restore the property.
That's pretty hard, Jim. Pretty cold.
Well, his alternative, or his suggestion is we buy the lot.
Oh, buy the lot?
Yeah. Entire lot.
Well, we, we'd have to redo that whole road.
I would say all of it.
Now, he didn't say that in the letter. Again, that's in your package. He had a loss of .24 acres, according to Russell's survey.
I think we're paying for .24 acres. But if that's the only option we have, you would have to remove, remove...
His, his suggestion being buying the whole property is leading me to suggest cutting. You know, you give me permission to talk to Al about it, he may have a different idea.
That 469, that's after the proposed right-of-way. That's the new.
What I would do is offering a certain amount that could be determined by your negotiating, and giving them access off of that road, both off of Spring Street and off of Appalachian Court. That's what we discussed earlier. And that would make that lot very valuable, or more valuable, almost, very valuable. But things have changed, I guess, I'm not sure, and I've not talked to Al in quite a while. So I'd be curious to know what Al determines. Mrs. Grant, the trees, we did take some trees because they were, after we cleaned out the ditch, they were in the way, and they were dangerous. Took them out, pretty good-sized trees, that she was going to sow. So you, you can negotiate.
Were they hardwoods, or...
There was pine and hardwood.
There were some hardwood in there?
We took them out around the, around the, what I think is...
Possibility of eight trees, is that close to your memory?
I'd get a few more than that, I'd think. You might be able to see, well, we dug, actually dug up the stumps, a lot of them.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be able to see. I think most of the trees are still over at the city property. I think they were stored over there. Just, she'll be fair with you, I think you can give a fair price. She was going to get, she was going to get three access from our efforts as well, for her lots all the way down. She wanted three.
Yeah.
So that's part of negotiations as well.
I will continue negotiating on this and may ask for an appraisal of .24 acres on Al's. This is a broad negotiation, if you have written that down. It was conversation. I will put that on the agenda, that we'll have to, I will continue the negotiation. Nothing in your package on this one, but I did talk to Dan Lester with Vincent Institute. There have been eleven applicants so far, applications, this is for the city manager position. Applications will be taken until September 22nd. All the ads are out for this, a number of social media sites are cited, others. Lisa shared some good news with me on this next one in your package. Remember, we made some upgrades for the generator at the Coke Road pump station a couple of months ago, and Lisa has sent that to Jima for consideration. And in this letter, you get a pretty good feeling that this will be accepted, and we should be getting a letter from them soon that they would pay their, their percentage. There would still be, city would still be responsible for part of the total $1,400 cost. But not the total. $14,000, I'm sorry.
It's a one zero.
Yeah. What's a zero among friends? Budget process, you've got the timetable. The, John, I don't think we ever replaced me on the finance committee.
Well, the committee is something I appointed to help make decisions before we have another city manager. I think you and John and myself and Lisa would be plenty, John being the committee.
Just one person?
One person, and that way we get done and get out, get out of here. I understand, how, how far along are we with budget? Y'all met with the staff?
We've not together met with the staff. I've met with a few of the staff, and I'm still waiting on some of the staff to give me information.
They should already have that for you.
I know. I've...
We will follow up with them on that. I know she got one today, I don't know what's outstanding.
I spoke, I spoke with one, I spoke with one.
You got yours ready?
In the car.
I spoke with one today, I spoke, I spoke with, I'm not going to call any names, but I spoke with one today, and he was kind of lackadaisical about it.
Really?
And I told him that, I told him that he better get it to you.
I have asked and asked.
Okay.
We will follow up on that.
But we're running out of time, and...
Well, and part of the holdup is, and Lisa may want to add something to this, the county hasn't provided the digest yet.
We can do the budget and plug that in, unless you plan to have a tax increase. We're running, we're running down.
We need to put the millage rate in.
We, we always beat that number, we have to beat that, because they don't, they'll not be ready by the time we go.
And, and in my mind, that's not a problem. It's not setting the millage rate. We've done it retro every time.
I'm going to ask to advertise, if we can advertise Monday, if I have it by then. The county, I don't know what's going on with them, but they're having computer problems, is all they told me. I usually have it like three, three weeks ago. I usually have the digest.
Tax increase. It'd be harder to set that millage.
Yes.
Just make it difficult.
I've never had this problem with them before. I don't, I don't understand it, and I tried to call him today.
We've had it in years past. But we, we, we know what we want to spend, we know what we got to do next year, and I suggest next year be a little more tight with what we do. $14,000 is not budgeted, that we're so proud to have. But these numbers are going to hit you in the head come November, December, when we're trying to talk to those budgets. We're doing that project with water farm at up at Talking Rock. That was a project that, that was kind of my pavilion. That'll, that'll eat you up pretty quick.
Every pavilion.
You spent all, you spent all the pavilions, Jim.
Actually, that was another water line.
I don't think that was really one.
That, that was another water line that we moved to.
It's a pavilion, buddy, it's a pav...
David, what was it?
It was, it was, it was...
David's going to get his budget before he gets in trouble. He's going to get his budget.
I'm embarrassed to do this.
Well, he ran out because he was, he's next on the list. We'll, we'll skip the water line, I think on the water line at Talking Rock, and Graham will be going to, he comes back. Need to study stormwater. We have a number of areas that stormwater is just not being handled correctly. We're not planning on what happens to stormwater. When we make new developments, whatever. We've had, we've had areas where, right now, we cleared some property, and water has flowed into a neighbor's yard, and is doing damage. Bill has given me very good direction on not going in and solving that problem. I think all of us would agree with that. But somehow, we need to be looking at the stormwater ordinance for this city. And that's made, as a city manager's suggestion to council.
Stormwater is a department. Stormwater needs to be recognized.
Yeah.
And, you know, kind of like, you don't let city jack, it's downhill in every direction. You can leave, and that's the water, and it leaves jack for fast. And if you've got, if you've got a blockage, such as a smaller pipe, such as you find at Bourbon Street, the Chamber of Commerce, or, or the, or the Speedburger area, and one Beaver Down can cause tremendous problems.
Yeah. I'm, I'm going to make add a suggestion that council look at studying stormwater and how we treat it, what we need to do to treat, not the word, but how to control it.
We already have some ordinances dealing with stormwater, so we'll have somewhere to start.
Yeah. David?
Yes.
Water line, you want to give them an update on what's happening there? And I've got a letter from the, actually, we have two letters. I did not get in your packages, we just received it today. I have shown it to Bill. But a letter from the county with a request from our meeting earlier this month, and also one that Lisa got from Katie Marver and Chris Bershak.
There was no follow-up meeting that Robert recommended, correct?
No.
This is just, I've, I've got a copy, I have to read it.
Lisa, you got all the... I will add to what you have in front of you. There was discussion of possibility, city bringing a water line from Salvation Army down to Edgewood Development. Talked to Lonnie about that, and Lonnie remembered earlier a US, working on a USDA loan in a similar situation. And in fact, had surveyed the same area, residents of this same area, about whether they would desire city water, whether their water is usable. In a discussion with USDA, they were very interested in working with us on that, on a 45% grant and loan for the rest of it. Interested in looking at, there's no promises out here. But I have asked Lonnie to go ahead and do a survey of 15 of the 80 potential customers.
You're not going to buy me low income on Grandview Road?
No, I don't think this is low income.
It is based on, it should be a DCA loan?
No, it's a different one.
DCA?
Same one we got for Iker Coke.
Oh, okay, okay, so it's not, not a...
Income boost?
USDA, not DCA.
It's only a certain, what'd you say, 45%?
45% grant and the loan, right now, they're giving them at 3.18%, potentially 40 years.
Do you follow?
Now, this is...
No, it's a different...
It's USDA.
A loan from USDA?
Mm-hmm. Grant and loan.
Yeah, well, we're looking at this, and we were talking, you know, we were, over the county, and I still don't really understand the building of this treatment facility. But I guess if they're going to do it, they're going to do it. I mean, they only pay us $250 a day for 150,000 gallons a day. And that's what Robert says they're going to do with this one, it's going to run half the time, right? So that's going to be 150,000 gallons a day. So you're telling me they're going to build a plant, have operators there, and produce 150,000 gallon water? So you're telling me they're gonna build a plant, have operators there and produce a hundred fifty thousand gallon water a day? And everyone do that cheaper than two hundred fifty dollars a day? That's ludicrous. That's crazy.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say what I told you at the meeting the other night. We're not gonna run the county. But I don't know where you're coming from.
Well, it ain't-
They're not here to-
But we're involved though because, you know, they're gonna build the facility and they're gonna take away future water-
Involved is a lot better than being committed. They're committed.
Well, I mean, and that's what people gotta understand though, that you're building something that you can do right down the street for two hundred- I don't think the public understands that you're building something that you can produce through the city for two hundred fifty dollars a day. And you're gonna spend millions to build this facility and man it with certified operators just because you want on the water plant?
That's what was said at the meeting the other evening. And what we will do, if I might add to this, recommend to council, is that it will take us probably six weeks with a good, two good crews to build that water line on Grandview Road.
Oh, no, we don't want that.
Well, let's go two months, or three months.
Six months.
Let's go six months. We can build that water line faster than they can build that water treatment plant. So once they start moving dirt, that's when we would pull the trigger.
They were suggesting in their letter-
I don't wanna run it for them not building the plant.
Oh.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah. And they're suggesting an eight-inch line. I've, well, everything I hear from David, it's gonna be larger than that. And are we able to lay-
Well, we're feeding to a six-inch line, man.
Well, I mean, their future has to be to take that line on to their line. I mean, their future can't just be, I mean, that's what I'm saying, is they're gonna sell all this water wholesale? So they're gonna sell it back to us at the same wholesale to them at a dollar sixty-seven? If you do the math-
They're gonna save money that they're having to pay Cherokee County.
Yeah, they're buying Cherokee, Gilmore and Gordon County.
But they're buying a hundred gallon-
The conversations need to be with them about what they're gonna do.
Yeah.
We can sit around and propose and question, and even though you made some great points the other night, it was their meeting, we didn't necessarily wanna just beat up on them about it, but I think a follow-up meeting and maybe a little bit more private setting, maybe we can make some headway. Kinda doubt we will, but-
Well, this, their administration, and we appreciate you bringing the attention. I personally think, and I told them in the meeting, it should be further south on Cold Creek or Long Swamp. But they're hell been determined to build a water treatment plant and it's part of the process. So I'm looking at three hundred thirty-three thousand gallons a day, either that or they released it because they're paying for it. And that'd be negotiations down the road, and if they wanna build a plant, let them do it. And we'll get customers, we'll go up and we'll pay for our line by tying on customers. And you asked a question while I go about the survey in that area. Most of the wells there have either iron or sulfur and dingy and all types, especially around the lake itself. And a lot of this influence the surface water, more people want to admit it. So we'll have a lot of customers in the Grandview area once we take water from Grandview's lake.
The day after our meeting with the county, there was someone came in telling us that-
What else did Carol have to say?
David, I know, I mean, I really appreciate what you're trying to say. Way I'm gonna look at this is, like the mayor said, we got three hundred and thirty thousand more gallons a day that's gonna be treated or available to treat in Pickens County. And they can do that quicker than we can upgrade ours and we're gonna have access to it, so.
If we do have access to it.
Yeah.
Because I've heard other entities that want this water and I'm not for sure that this is gonna come. I think they're wanting to put it in our line, but they're wanting to get it back out on the other end. So, you know, if you're not, if the city's gonna lay this line and spend all this money to do this, you need to have it in writing that we're gonna have access to three hundred thousand gallons of water, not just lay the line to pick up fifteen customers. Because this is gonna be a huge investment step. And you're letting them do, yeah, let them do what they wanna do, but at the same time, we gotta make sure that if we're gonna lay this line for half a million dollars, which is nice enough to be for it, then you're gonna have to make sure that, okay, whenever this plant's built, that three hundred thirty thousand is either gonna go to y'all to take y'all off of us, which will help us, or y'all put the water into us and actually supply us. But my feeling is, is they're wanting to detour us and go straight to Pickenoo.
Well, I think, I think the future is gonna have a lot of twists and turns dealing with that water. I'm just happy that there's twists and turns to be had for that water and the opportunity that we have. Be up for negotiations and the county water sells, they sell their water for a lot higher price than we do in the city of Jasper.
For our customers.
And all these things are gonna be very much in the forefront in our discussions. But what I think, that line that we run to them, I think we do it for less than half a million dollars, and I think we can do it. I think it needs to be done. It's our service area. We do, surely they'll wanna give up our service area. And those customers in that area have been waiting on us a long time and I've been waiting for three hundred thirty-three thousand gallons to be released or treated out of that lake. And the lake, well, we've had, we've had about six weeks with very little rain, before it rained every day until about six weeks ago. And that lake, I guarantee you, it starts suffering quickly. It recharges quickly when it rains, but it's gonna, thirty-three, three hundred thirty-three thousand gallons a day is gonna impact.
They pumped a lot of water out of there and it's still running there.
Well, that's, we have, six weeks is, David colored the drought. But I'm kinda like, had a little dry work myself, but-
Yeah, man, but it is a, there's no doubt, and that's, that's the only thing I'm saying is, is that to make sure that, well, I know we're gonna need to cover the service delivery area, but, you know, we're not gonna have to cover it in one year, but with this, we're gonna have to cover it. We'd better make the budget to get some prices and get the budget to put it in next year, but that's what we're gonna do.
It needs to be done next year. It won't be done this year. They're not gonna be ready for it either. County's not even gonna start it till next year. Maybe you, you're at, I don't know when they're gonna start.
The treatment facility?
Yeah.
I think, I thought Robert said next year.
Well, hey, may I have, I'd have to look-
How long you think it'll take to put in a portable facility?
We'll pull it up on the tractor, yeah.
It's not gonna be a year construction.
I mean, you build a metal tank in two months.
We can have it there by the time they're ready to start manufacturing.
Well, see, I would, it's, have we been writing that we're gonna be a part of it? And I don't think we have that.
Well, we haven't had those meetings that Robert said we were gonna have either. I've not, I've not gotten a call. But it's gonna be available in Pickens County. I think that's pretty handy.
You do have a request from the commission, I believe, on here? Is that something you wanna put on the agenda?
I think we should. All right, and it, in our, our motion needs to be made that we move forward with more negotiations to determine that, to come back to the council. So we've not, we've not had those meetings. This is the first I've seen after that meeting we had the other night.
This was just received today.
And answer some of David's questions that we're just gonna be, we're gonna give our service, well, first of all, they've come into our service delivery area and have purchased water, which is legal. They can, they can do that. Marietta could've come up and done it. And I, and I've tried to tell the Grandview people for years, someday the federal government or the state government's gonna come in and say, release water, and with gun downstream, and I always wanted it captured, captured either for the city of Jasper, preferably, but Pickens County is better than an area of Alpharetta and whatever else downstream, or Rome, Georgia. So we, we've got it tied up for generations, generations in Pickens County. And, and I was unable to get them to go along with the city of Jasper. But they got it anyway. But, so to answer your question, is putting on the agenda, yes, we wanna move forward with negotiations and we and David can go and David can bring up all his concerns.
Or they can come here.
But if we had to run that water line, we can put two crews, one of them coming in each direction and maybe one in the middle, but I don't wanna do it too quickly. I wanna see, I wanna see dirt being turned, but I think ultimately might be another location, but that's dirt talk.
David talked a little bit about the water line and can install it.
We finally got off of Johnson's Road. We probably hit every meter and every line out through there because nobody knew exactly where any of the stuff was. A lot of it was mapped, but mapped wrong, but we got off of Johnson's Road and we're on Old Highway Five north now and-
Where are you coming from, all the way up to Water Tank?
Appalachian Court. I told you, we run that six all the way back out, we tie on that six at the end of Appalachian Court and come down Johnson's. I'm not with David Little Cagle. Is that the name? What's David?
Collins.
Collins?
Not Collins.
That's Sam's, Monument?
Monument. Carver.
Carver.
Is he the one, no, the guy in the brick house?
Yeah, I think so.
He's got the real nice driveway. But anyway, we're through there and we're headed north and we're tying the people on as we go, and that's one of the reasons-
How much distance is it gonna be total? We got it?
Uh, nine thousand feet.
A little less than half done?
Maybe, yeah, I mean, if you go all the way down to, you know, Ivy Lane and down to that area and come-
Your crazy, Jimmy?
Yes. And as we can, I mean, we, we've not worked on it every, every day, but as we can, we're working. Hopefully we'll get some more, you know, help from some of the other partners that are getting caught up on their stuff and they'll be able to come over and help out too. Because we're gonna get to a point to where we have to get out on the road and Robert's given us permission to cut the pavement on the outside of the white line. Whenever we get to areas where it's almost impossible, because of guard rail and slope off the bank, right out, he's given us permission to cut that little sleeve of pavement on the side of the white line.
Going down the heat?
Uh, both, yeah.
Wherever we need to-
In the curve?
Yes, wherever there's a guard rail and there's a bad slope bank on the backside, he's given permission to cut the pavement. And they'll let us go back out.
So we should be more than happy around the water line.
Yeah, he was very big.
David, you're saying that nobody knows where the water lines are. Are we putting that in the map and program that we-
Yes, as we're mounting, yeah, because one of the problems was is that, you know, a lot of that was so old it wouldn't even use the tape or the wire at that time. So, you know, a lot of it was, I'm pretty sure it's on that side of the tree.
Right.
You know, but now, as we're laying it, we're putting the tape in it and you can find it with a locator. You can start this end and go all the way to the other end and it'll all be combined on one line. And even the meters and stuff, we're running the tape up on them.
It will be, and it will be there on bodies.
You're not, you're putting wire in?
It's taped, just the tape. And the tape's better now than it used to be. It don't break as easy as it used to.
These tapes, tell Bud don't dig any deeper than that tape.
But, yeah, it's, it's gonna be able to be found. And he, as he is putting it in, he comes out even every day or every other day and puts it in the computer. And almost all of the old, it's like I say, nobody really knows, and without the tape, it's just a guess.
Yeah.
You know, so if you're off the foot-
We've got a four inch down to old Grandview Road, but with a real nice house overlooking the view, brought down a little trailer.
Is that the name of the road? Twenty minute lane, ain't it?
Now, what I call it, Grandview, yeah, maybe, yeah.
Yeah, the first, the first one down-
Wrong run, yeah.
Yeah, we've got a, there, and it goes up there.
Goes down to the mobile home we did that years ago.
Edge of those double line, at the end of those double line trailers, yeah. But the tubing keeps going. The tubing goes across and it's got quite a bit of pressure on it.
What about the bore in the red row, y'all?
We're not down to that point. That'd probably be on next year's budget also. That's on part that I give Lisa this night. What we were looking for too, that's some of the stuff, the reason I was holding off on turning that in was the guidance from y'all, are we gonna lay the line? Somebody else gonna lay the line, or are we gonna buy the pipe, or, you know, how?
How much amount, anything?
Yeah, uh, yeah.
We gotta run. We can afford to run, unless you guys got a really good grant.
That's something else going to be on next year's budget. That's gonna be a huge, you know, a huge factor.
How much is eight-inch foot, man?
I'm gonna say probably six and a half.
I think seven, eight dollars. Yeah, that's what you multiply that out and you figure it's gonna take-
What'd you say, sixteen thousand?
Uh, water tank.
Water tank.
Little extra three miles.
And you got your fire hithers and your valves and all that. And I think to pick up the customers, you're probably gonna be looking at more. You're probably going through some floors and go to some side streets, more people.
A good percent more to get to the customers.
Yeah.
Is to get off and keep moving.
Yeah. But, you know, it's gonna be a pretty good project.
How much you budget for?
Another fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand?
Another fifty thousand, yeah. Y'all already proved it, sixty.
Think we have to have over a hundred thousand worth of pavilion?
Yeah, well.
There was, there was a water line project that we took the money from.
Refuge Valley.
Refuge Valley.
Tell them how many years we had that, but that ten year, no one else built it. I'll let you, I'll let you know company soon.
No, Wallace good. No, Wallace good. Refuge Valley, and John suggested just put the both of them. And our, mine and that fifty thousand, that's a good dime because-
Any other, any questions on Grandview or the new line out? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Just to give you a quick update on the one twenty-five North Main Street of Integra Purchase, I believe, Bill, that Dentson did go make application. And survey has been done. Bill has the survey. I did get an email from Carol today saying that we take her a little bit more time to get the ATM machine moved. I don't think that's a real concern because it's taken us a long time to get the purchase done, but we are moving on it.
Jim, you skipped up on the historical society concern.
Ah, sorry, yes. I have a request from Bill Cagle. He has an agreement with the county to help support replacing winters at the old jail if the city would participate to, to, to behalf. Fifty percent of the cost. They're not sure how much the cost is gonna be yet. The, they're not sure if they want, which of these options they want to go with. They do know the labor cost, but the materials, you can see on the quote, depends on which way they wanna go. What, is this, I would not suggest we give carbon to it. I would suggest if, if this is something council wants to participate in, give me a dollar amount and I will work toward it. Or we just tell them, come with the firm quote and we can decide then.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Jim, we had a gentleman behind you. Raise your hand if you didn't see him.
It's possibly somewhere around four thousand dollars.
Four thousand?
Two thousand. I mean, it takes the winters lifetime of going by the businesses and getting donations. Not taking taxpayer money and spending it for sure.
I think one thing to remember there is that is a county-owned property. I've had that discussion with Mr. Jones, myself recently.
I know there's agreements on who maintains the, we maintain the grass, Kirk maintains the shrubs. What, what is the agreement on this? Is there a written agreement on this, John?
Historical society has run it for years, haven't they? But still, Kirk's other county-owned building and it's much like- it's much like when we ran the wrestling and other activities out of the key school gym. Uh, we didn't really want to spend money on the county building that they could just take away from you at any time, so.
Which happened.
Uh, which happened. And thank goodness we didn't spend all that money. So, it's just, but it's a council decision, but again, where's the money coming from? It's just time. If they want it now, they might want to fill that in the next year, just...
And I don't think that's going to hurt their feelings. Something we could put in the budget, uh, let me, let me do this. Let me get a firm cost and, uh, come back.
I've seen a few things that you're throwing out next year. We got people coming down making that balance, I believe. So, especially when all these departments are bringing their wish list to you, so.
Yeah, I saw one of them today.
You're going, it's going to be tough.
Jim, the, the improvements we talked about in doing, trying to revitalize downtown, so there's something going on downtown that we talked about putting in the budget. If we decide, could that be used from that? Or we do anything else on lights or?
I have done nothing on the lights.
Right, and I know we're not going to until...
Yeah, but...
Which may be eight years from now, so.
Is that a possibility? I mean, that's what...
I'm just saying, I mean, because, just looking at...
I don't think that money was budgeted either, was it? It was... It just had stuff.
We're not paying that many either.
It's because we had ordered it.
We'd like to. Should have have done two years ago.
Because nobody's got the money to do theirs and we weren't going to stick them up in the alley when nobody else has got them, so.
Let me see if I can get a firm price.
I'd, I'd definitely get a firm price before we even think about it.
Millage rate, Lisa. You want to talk about that a little bit?
What?
Millage rate.
All I was going to say is what I said earlier, that we need to get, start the advertising. I can't do it until I get the digest.
And you said it's a computer problem is...
Yeah, but you, you just...
School board has, sitting there is in the morning at seven forty-five. They had a school board meeting last night though, and she didn't get it in time for that one, so they have it.
I didn't get a call back from Darren today, so I don't know why I didn't get mine, so. Find out.
Well, we've not, we've not increased millage rate in years, so.
But I need that digest to find out if we need to, um, do a rollback, because if, if the values...
We'll have to have a meeting.
Yeah, but, but, but I can't advertise a millage rate until I have that digest and, and appraisers, uh...
We, we, we can take our same millage rate, can we not?
No, because if the, if the values go up in property and, uh, we don't roll it back for that. And we don't roll our millage rate back. The last two years, we rolled it back just a tiny bit, so we would not have a, a property tax increase. If it's from growth, if the digest goes up because of growth, that's different. But if it goes up because your appraisal jumped up and a lot of people's appraisal, that's when you have to roll it back. Does that make sense?
To, to avoid.
Have we had, we had any millage rate, have we had any tax appraisals inside the corporate limits this year that we know of?
I don't know.
Might give Roy a call tomorrow.
Yeah.
If he's not, if he's not, we could start playing with it anyway until they get it to us. But we've got so many things we got to get done and we're going to be looking at, you're going to be looking at the situation. Give your heads up on that.
I understand. All right, so you've got information, uh, in your package about watershed protection plan. I believe it calls for a, uh, a, a vote from council. You can't read that now, but, uh, take that home and read it, uh, and we'll have it on the agenda. And you also have the hazard comedic, uh, hazard mitigation plan. This comes from RDC's. I believe it's RDC's. That's, that's just the approval of it. That's the approval of the county ones.
We've got a, we've got a resolution passed on that hazard mitigation.
Yeah, that needs to be on the agenda.
Both of those, I think, probably need to be on the agenda. That is all I have, Lisa. Unless you have something else.
Were you going to, I put in, in the book, I gave, gave you a, a copy of the, uh, uh, where they were, turnip seed was, where we paid them the fifteen thousand to, um...
I gave you that to them.
Look, the financing.
Yeah, I gave it to them.
And that was Chris's, I don't have it in front of me, but that was Chris's response today, um, where they...
Talking about an email from Chris Pro...
Proje.
Proje, um, to Lisa, discussion of the, um...
What they've done so far and where we are. Right now, he, I talked to him a little bit, uh, they're pursuing the USDA grant loan.
Dr. Van and Chris.
I talked to Chris. And I don't know. They've not heard back on some things, but it's all in that email. Read through it.
This watershed protection plan was... The place was passed ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight. Can't remember the year. And then we contracted with, uh, the RDC, the town out of Dalton. Uh, and later we merged with, uh, Coosa Valley and actually finished up after our merger with Coosa Valley. But we could not apply for a wastewater treatment plant permit increase until this was done. So, this is very important. Then eventually this is revision of that, so.
And, and it will call for some actions later on to, or continuing more work.
And David, you, you, because of this, David, you mentioned that our increase permit is not going to be that extensive for the amount of money we would want to spend.
Yeah, yeah, me and Jim, uh, we've met with this Kathleen Box. My suggestion would be the city could hire her and on the stormwater side of it, or because of the new laws that's coming into effect on it, on the water leaving your town is crazy. The coal form and the amount of, you know, sediment that's in the streams, she does all of that also. Can probably do it cheaper than some of the other people trying to do that.
How did we get, how did we get her?
Uh, state.
Okay.
And then she does some private work too. Also, uh, located to that. Though every town, or Kelly already has them, you're going to have these boxes with a chain around them if you see them on the rivers and streams and stuff. And they sample every so often. And for those samples, then if certain parameters aren't met, then they come...
Well, one chicken farm does more than City of Jasper does.
And they'll come after that chicken farm. Uh, remember Jim, you were talking about some of the people they had went after, and it's including farms.
Price of chicken is going up.
What change will you see?
Yeah, but if your town don't meet the limitations, they come after you now. But it's about that stream, you know, that was over somewhere in the Atlanta area. They find the heck out of them.
For what was in the water?
Coal, yeah. Wastewater plant.
Leaving the wastewater plant? Oh, okay. As they should.
Yes, yeah, they, they call them right in and, uh, like I say, that sampler runs all the time. And she comes around every so often, grabs the samples and runs the sampler and submits them to the state. And then the state sends you the file in the mail. You got to have someone do it. I mean, it's not an option. That's what Jim was talking about, stuff that's coming up later on. Yeah, the stuff about the rooftops and, you know, the roads and stuff that you build and everything. You're going to have to make sure that all that's done and dropped because when it goes in that stream and runs that stream, you're in big trouble.
Mayor, council, anything else that, uh, you want to bring up, see?
Sound like fun to me.